Ruda.
Yeah.
Hope you had a better day.
He was being punished because he crashed the slide.
In accordance with the open meeting law, the board states for the record that this meeting is being recorded by NORCAM and may be recorded by other local media. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I ask the board members to stay standing if you wouldn't mind, and Jane and Michael as well. As you can see, we have our beautiful ugly sweaters this evening, and I assume our counterparts at the school committee as well. And tonight, the reason we're wearing these is really trying to advocate for the North Reading Transcript Does the Neighbor Helping Neighbor Fund. And our goal tonight is to make some awareness for it, and hope folks will contribute to help those in need. And our competition tonight is to vote for the board of selectmen if you can, because the losing committee will be the ones contributing towards the transcript fund of $100. So we look forward to the challenge, we look forward to your voting, and I want to thank you everyone, my board especially, for wearing these ridiculous ugly sweaters. It's my request, I made you do it, and I appreciate you honoring the request. And you look amazing, thank you. So please, let's get started with tonight's business.
Maureen, you don't have a microphone. If you couldn't mind stepping to the microphone, though, and just take a second. Yes, Maureen, yes. How will people be able to vote? If you could just tell us real quick.
Hi. We're going to post a link to our Facebook page, The North Reading Transcript, and on that Facebook page will be a link back to the North Reading Community Connections page, as well as the North Reading News page. It's a new page that Al Perera Advanced Photo recently started. So folks can tune into any of those three pages. And those who don't have internet access, you know, older folks are welcome to just give us a call, or text us or send us an email, just get us the vote however they see fit. And we're going to have it run and go from this Thursday through New Year's Eve to give people, you know, time to look at photos either in print or online.
And how long will folks be able to donate to the Neighbor Helping Neighbor Fund?
Usually goes through the end of the year, and then the first week in January, we wrap it up with all the final donations. So we're over 17,000 right now.
Wow, excellent.
Last year, we hit 40,000, so we've got a little bit ways to go. So every little bit helps.
Mr. Messeri.
Yeah. While you're in the public domain, why don't you tell everybody that might be watching tonight where they can make the donation?
Okay. You can mail a donation to the North Reading Transcript to the home office, Box 7, 01864 in North Reading. You could also drop it off in person at Redding Cooperative Bank at 170 Park Street, and they will record your donation. You can mail it to us also at our home office at 26 Albion Street in Wakefield, Mass., 01880. So those are the three ways of doing it.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, if you go on to North Reading Community Connection right now, you can see us in all of our glory. Beautiful.
Well, we have anyone here for public comment this evening? No one here for public comment? We're going to get started with the minutes. Mr. Schultz, if you could start with the November 28, 2017 regular and executive session.
Sure. Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the November 28, 2017 regular session minutes as written.
Second.
I got a motion by Mr. Schultz. Was that Mr. O'Leary?
Oh, Mrs. Menupalli.
Mrs. Menupalli. Any discussion? None heard? All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the November 28, 2017 executive session minutes as written.
Motion is second?
Second.
Second, Mrs. Menupalli. Any discussion? None heard? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed? Unanimous.
November 30, 2017.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the November 30, 2017 regular session minutes as written.
Second.
Motion is second, any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the November 30, 2017 executive session minutes as written.
Second.
Motion is second, any discussion? None heard? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous.
December 4. Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the December 4, 2017 regular session minutes as written.
Second.
Motion is second, any discussion? None heard? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the December 4, 2017 executive session minutes as written.
Second.
I got a motion is second, any discussion? None heard? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous. Okay. Next piece of business is going to be ratify the memorandum of agreement with the North Reading Firefighter Union 1857. Mr. Gilberto, would you like to start things off?
Certainly. So the document is a couple of pages long, but I'll do my best to try to summarize some of the more salient points for the public, and this is a result of ongoing negotiations between the town, represented by myself, the Human Resources Director, Mr. Collins, Selectman Messeri, Selectman Prisco, and then prior to that, Selectman Yule as well. So multiple months, and actually sending in years worth of negotiations for the agreement. The members of the bargaining team are here this evening, I thank them for their presence. We've reached a tentative agreement with the fire union for a term covering fiscal year 17, 18, 19, and 20. So it's a four-year term, retroactive to July 1, 2016. And some of the items that are in there, and I'll just try to highlight some of the areas that were the source of discussion. As has been the case with our other units, this agreement includes reforms for new hired employees, including longevity payments and vacation time, and establishes accrual program for vacation time for newly hired employees. It also establishes some parameters around the town's existing education incentive program and makes some changes to that program for existing employees. The agreement also calls to reduce end-of-care sick time buyback for our long-term employees, who are those employees hired before August 1 of 2011. The agreement also includes some language that strengthens the role and responsibilities for the officer in charge overseeing the department. Townspeople know we have an advanced life support program, or paramedic program, that we've been operating since 2012, and this agreement serves to make some adjustments to update the responsibilities and the program associated with that for the individuals in the department who are charged with overseeing that program. The agreement includes some changes to the way we call back and fill staffing in the department, and it's intended to ensure that we have appropriate staffing on the apparatus when it leaves the fire station for a particular response, and also to ensure that any overtime that might need to be worked is spread, has the opportunity to be spread as evenly as possible amongst all the department members. And so those changes, we think, will result in an opportunity to have additional participation from all members of the department and try to address the responses. And again, just for those who don't know, we have a department, comparatively speaking, that is smaller, but that does much of its work, and is able to protect the community through the reliance of the employees who are responding on overtime from their time off to try to make sure we have the appropriate staffing. This further updates that to reflect what we believe the town's needs are. With regard to the wage increase, wages are slated to adjust consistent with our other collective bargaining agreements, which include a 1% cost of living agreement for a cost of living adjustment, excuse me, for each of the fiscal years, and then a 1.5% reform adjustment for fiscal year 17, 18, and 19, and for fiscal year 20 is a half percent reform, a half percent associated with reform, and 1% associated with adjustment in the EMT wage rates. So I think that that's a fair summary of the agreement. I think I caught most of the items on there. It's a multiple-page document, but that's largely what's going on with this particular agreement. And I think we're pleased to be here with this opportunity for the board to consider ratification this evening. We received notice of the union ratified on Friday morning, which we certainly were pleased to hear. And I can tell you that it's been a lengthy discussion involving not only the individuals here, but individuals who helped to facilitate the discussion that brought us to this evening's date.
Do you want to hold up? Okay. Sure. Well, I just want to take the opportunity to thank the union members for being here this evening, and especially the ones in the bargaining unit. I only participated for about several months. I know Mr. Messeri, Mr. Yule initially kicked things off a little over a year ago. And these contracts take a while. I know people sitting at home thinking about, oh geez, over a year to negotiate a contract. Well, you know, these aren't, you know, simple contracts. There's a lot of moving parts to them, and there's a lot of challenges on both sides. And I think we came to a great conclusion. I think there's a lot of structural changes that are made for both sides that benefit both sides, and that's the way it's supposed to work. And I want to thank you for your patience and your understanding. You know, the town has continued challenges with expenses, and we're trying to get to a point where we have sustainability in every one of our contracts, and working with you and your willingness to work with us to try to find at least the next step towards that sustainability. I think we made great strides in doing that, so I want to thank you for that, and I look forward to hopefully, we'll have a vote here in a little bit, but I'd love to give you the opportunity to come up if you want to say a few words. But again, thank you for your time, the commitment you guys made to meet with us on a continuous basis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't want to touch your computer screen here. My name is Matt Carroll, 16, Peter Road, North Reading. Does it proceed your thing that Bob had his hand up?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
No, no. If you couldn't mind, Matt?
Yeah, sure, absolutely.
Rather, I would like to recognize Mr. Messeri first.
Absolutely.
Thank you. I did not see that. Mr. Messeri, you have the floor.
Thank you, Michael. I just want to say, all the hours that were spent coming to what I think is a successful conclusion, what stuck out most, even though many times we were in disagreement, you were all gentlemen in the process, and I thank you very much for that.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So my name is Matt Carroll, 16, Peter Road, North Reading. Tonight, I'm here representing the proud men of the North Reading Firefighters Union, currently serving my second term as its president. I'm here tonight to thank all involved in the successful negotiations, we hope, of the new collective bargaining agreement between the town and the firefighters union. Like Chairman said, this process began, Mr. Gilberto said, this process actually began over two years ago, November 2015. We notified the town of our intent to negotiate. And again, I'd like to also acknowledge the commitment and patience to everybody involved. I'd first like to thank the other members of my team, Mike Tanyan, Tom Harris, as a group. Like you said, we've spent countless hours, texts, emails, personal meetings, phone conversations between ourselves, the attorneys, and everything else, to bring forth what we see as a successful agreement. I'd also like to thank Town Administrator Mike Gilberto, Selectman Messeri, Chairman Prisco, former Selectman Jeff Yule, and Human Resources Director Bob Collins. Thank you very much. From our standpoint, we think both sides work well together. Both sides, again, showed great patience in each other, and both represented each other's sides to the best of their abilities. We feel the agreement achieves the needs of the department and its firefighters, and at the same time, addressing some of the board's objectives. Is it perfect? No, but like you said, Mr. Chairman, negotiations isn't about either side getting exactly what they want. It's about achieving something that both sides agree that is a good thing for both sides. So thank you all again to all that are involved. And finally, I'd like to recognize Chief Bill Warnock for his commitment and passion to this process. I think we can all agree that without Bill, arriving at this point would have been a little more difficult. And I think we can all agree that commitment and passion are two words that embody all that he stands for. Mr. Chairman, with your permission, I'd like to take a minute in this public forum to say a few words about Chief Warnock. If that's okay, I promise to be brief. In one month's time, Chief William Warnock, known to many as Bill, Chief or Billy, is set to retire after serving not only this community and this department, but the entire fire service for the past 35 years. During these past 35 years, Billy has saved many lives, cared for thousands of our sick and injured, and has fought to ensure that the fire department had what it needed to get the job done. His motto is simple, and is hung on the wall outside of his office for everyone to read. It says, "When the bell rings, we go." That's Billy. That's who he is. No matter what's going on in our personal lives, no matter what the discussions are at the firehouse, when called to duty, everything gets put aside, there's work to be done. To the members of our community, we say this: Bill Warnock has been there when you needed him, even if you didn't know you needed him. He has always been there, he has always had your back. He has worked to make the members of your fire department stronger and better at what we do each and every day. Bill is leaving the fire department better than when he found it, something we all wish to achieve, and he has always had our back. Lastly, Billy, we wish to say thank you, and know that we will always have your back. Thank you.
That wasn't a surprise. You must have liked it.
Chief, would you like an opportunity? Chief Warnock, would you like an opportunity to say anything? Stop, I don't want to put you on the spot. Do not feel compelled, but I would like to honor you, the respect, if you would like the opportunity.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. It's been an honor to serve this town for 35 years. I love those guys, they're my family. I love the town. I grew up here. Nothing's more important than to make sure that everyone's safe at all times. We may not have the same objective all the time, but we always work to a resolution, and that's important. But I couldn't be prouder to be the boss of the North Reading Fire Department. And if you asked me 10 years ago if I saw myself doing this, I would have told you no. I'm a firefighter, I like going to calls. It was very difficult to go into the back room, but I'm glad I did it. I'm glad I had the help that I had on both sides of the field, and it was very nice what they sent. So thanks.
I just would like to also note, I mentioned a number of folks who participated in negotiation, but the chief served as a representative of management, but also as a facilitator in the discussion along the way to try to find something that we felt we could all feel would be appropriate for the men of the fire department and for the town as well. So, Chief, I want to thank you for your efforts, I want to thank you for your patience in the process as well, and I want to thank you for your counsel.
So before we take a motion, I just wanted to take a minute just to recognize our HR Director, Mr. Rob Collins. You know, this is the first time I've worked with you this year. I've done these CBAs before, been in the collective bargaining agreements now for the last eight years, different times, and having you in the room with us, I think it certainly gave us some adult supervision, I will say. And so it's been a worthy investment of the town that's made in you, and you have completely exceeded my expectations, and Liz as well. By having both of you participate in these collective bargaining agreements behind the scenes certainly helped us get to the resolution, so a lot of credit goes to both of you. You know, what we do, we do a lot of talking, we may do a lot of complaining, we may do a lot of crying, but you guys really bring us back to center, and without your support and the town administrator, well, with his guidance, we certainly can get there. And Chief Warnock, last thing to you, I will say that it's been absolutely an honor these years. I think we've had, as you said, we may have, I think we've all always had the same objective, but we always had different, maybe some different paths to get there, but we always found a way to get there, and I respect you for that, and thank you for your service to the town. It's truly been a pleasure, and I look forward to seeing you around. Hopefully, you're not going to go too far away from us. So with that, I'd like to take a motion. By my math, Chief, you must have started at age eight, huh? Mr. Chairman, I move to ratify the memorandum of agreement between the town and North Reading and North Reading Firefighters on 1875 for a period of July 1, 2016 through June 30, 2020. I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Mr. Messeri. Any more discussion? Mr. O'Leary.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let me just preface my comments by saying, I probably would have taken that bet 10 years ago, would I have seen you in the position, and even when it came available. I wasn't so sure you were going to do it, but boy, am I glad you did. And you really have done a tremendous job in leading these men and leading the department, and you have left it a better department than when you came in. Long, healthy retirement to you. I just love a month ago, so don't go too fast. You got the count down. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let me just state up front that, again, I think this is the best agreement that could be reached, but I don't necessarily agree with it, so right up front, I'm going to be voting in opposition to it. That does not, please don't misinterpret, this is a lack of appreciation for what the fire department, members of the fire department do for us, how they protect us, and how they answer the calls every day. They do a tremendous job. To me, this is a little bit bigger picture in relation to our other contract negotiations, our overall goals as a board, and where we're ending up in relation to some of the objectives that the board has publicly stated, and then in the executive session, worked through our strategies. And I think that this just comes up a little bit short in relation to that, but it's not that the, what is being agreed to that the members of the North Reading Fire Department don't deserve it. But I think at this particular juncture, with all that we've gone through, I think this is like a, at least a third try with this, along with some mediation in between. I just think that the, we look at, compare and contrast what other collective bargaining units have given in the way of reforms, it's a little bit more in relation to what the contract that we're agreeing to is. But again, I think it's very deserving. I compliment my fellow board members, the administration, and the bargaining team, because it hasn't been easy over these last couple of years to come to an agreement. So I congratulate you on reaching the agreement, but I'll be voting no.
Thank you, Mr. O'Leary. Any other? Are we good? I just had a quick question for firefighter Carroll, if you could just come to the podium, I have a quick question for you. Was it unanimous on your group? I don't need a total, but was it unanimous?
Not unanimous, but I would say overwhelmingly positive.
So Mr. O'Leary not voting in favor of this, it sounds like he's not going to vote in favor of this. I think you can see where it's been on both sides.
Yeah, exactly. Like you said, we work our, do our best to, you know, we have a group to try to appease, and same here. So, you know, we're not going to reach everybody on every single item, but in general, not unanimous, but overwhelmingly, it was seen as a positive piece of paper, so.
Good.
No offense by, taken by Mr. O'Leary.
And I think, and I will say, I won't speak for Mr. O'Leary, but I think some of his comments, too, it's really back to the board members as well, because we did go into this entire collective bargaining season with a strategy, and in some ways, along the way, we maybe lost, we came off the road a little bit, and I think this is just a message to all of us to keep, let's get back to the road that we all agreed on. And so I don't think it is against you, your board members, your committee members, your membership. I think it's just a big picture perspective when you may see one no vote. It's not just because of the department.
Yeah, we can.
If I'm summarizing.
Right, and as you recall, we've acknowledged that, you know, we know what the objectives are, and it just, like you said, it's a matter of how much you give and how much you don't give. I appreciate it.
But I think it's a message that should go all the union members. We have tried to pick a strategy, we work well in advance of going into it, and, you know, we need to get back to that strategy, and it's not because we're trying to single anyone out, it's that we are trying to get to sustainability, and that's the most important thing, and I, Mr. O'Leary, has been a big advocate toward create sustainability in our contracts, and I support him in those efforts, and I can understand why he's taking this position.
Yeah, we absolutely respect that position. We have no issues whatsoever. Thank you.
So if there's no other comments, I'll take a.
Just thank you for your comments, and your comments to Matt. But, you know, I spent 25 years on the other side of the table as a union official and contract negotiator, so I certainly appreciate all the effort that's put in and the positions that you take, and there's a lot of give and take, and I think an awful lot of what's in this agreement is terrific, and I think it's to the benefit of the community as a whole, and as well as your membership, as far as sustaining what we can deliver and afford to deliver services. But the overall big picture is a little bit different, so again, appreciate and applaud your efforts, and applaud the outcome.
Now that I have a motion and a second, all those in favor? Aye. Posed?
No.
It passes four to one. Thank you. Merry Christmas and Happy New Year, and happy holidays to the entire fire department. Thank you. Next business is to ratify the MOA for the DPW Local 25.
Mr. Chairman, I move to ratify the memorandum of agreement between the town and North Reading and DPW Local 25.
If you wouldn't mind, yep, Mr. Schultz, I'm going to give Town Administrator maybe an opportunity to just make a quick summary, and then we'll take a motion, if that's okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll do my best to briefly summarize this memorandum of agreement between the town and the DPW union, which was ratified by the membership of that union this afternoon. This, excuse me, would be a three-year agreement, agreement covering fiscal years 18, 19, and 20. It'll be effective July 1, 2017, which is this past July. And it includes some reforms to the benefits for new employees, namely, changes to the longevity payments and changes to the vacation time, as well as moving to an accrual for vacation time. All of this sounds familiar, gentlemen, to you, I'm sure. So again, this was something that was identified, and this is, we didn't get to exactly the same place, but we got, I think, fairly close with regard to the negotiations with the individual units. We also included some changes relative to requiring certification for an employee who might be absent for more than three days. We have created the ability to establish a position known as Operations Manager, or something similar there, too, which would not be as part of the union, covered membership and employees, providing supervisory oversight for our employees. Bear with me one moment, Mr. Chairman. We've also got the ability to make, we've also been able to work cooperatively with the members of the union to come up with some reforms. There were identified as areas that we could improve upon last year in the DPW, namely, the ability to institute a more detailed and modernized time management system in the department, as well as the ability to utilize an automatic vehicle locator system or GPS for town-owned DPW vehicles. The town doesn't have any immediate term intention to do that, but it's something that we felt was important to discuss, and we reached a favorable agreement with the employees to have the ability to implement that as a protection both for the town and for the employee as well. There were some changes to the work schedule, namely, relative to lunch and scheduled work breaks. In terms of compensation, we're making some adjustments to some of the stipends that we provide to individuals for having specialized training in a particular area, or having a particular license in a particular area. There also were some changes to the requirements for maintaining licensing for the employees. And there is a wage adjustment, which equals out to 1% cost of living and 2% increase for reforms for each of the three fiscal years covered. And I believe that that covers nearly everything. Oh, and we've also, it's something that we encountered over the past 18 months, the ability to be able to hire a new employee at a step that is not the first step of the contract is something we felt was important in order to be able to maintain our membership, our employment levels at the appropriate level. Namely, this could be impactful if we're trying to recruit somebody from another community, or if we're trying to incentivize someone to take the position who maybe has an established work history. So that was also something that was significant, and again, reached through negotiations with the union and ratified by the union this afternoon.
Well, this was another contract that Mr. Messeri and I worked together on with the town administrator and HR director, and I will say that it was not as lengthy, but it certainly was a lot of meetings. I think we ended up with five meetings with. I think we, we ended up with five meetings with lengthy hours to them, and, but it came to a great agreement. Um, you, you had mentioned these, uh, stipends, and I've never been a fan of stipends, but this particular department, uh, I was educated a little bit about how important the stipends are, because, you know, just simple things like pesticides, well, you know what? You have to have a license to put down pesticides. And I understand now why it's important, because when you try to go outside services for those types of things, they are very expensive. To have that kind of service in-house is a benefit to the town, so in those kinds of cases, I think, in the DPW department, more than others, uh, I can, I, I really understood, and the DPW did a great job explaining to me, the benefit to, uh, to the town why we have stipends, so, uh, I certainly did have a, a lesson learned on that, so I wanna thank them for that education. So if there's, uh, anybody else wanna say anything? Mr. Messeri?
The comment I'll make is, uh, having been involved not only in this contract, but the previous one, which was only a year ago because we were playing catch-up, uh, the negotiating team and their representative on this round, uh, was so, so much better and so much easier to work with than the previous contract, and I'm not necessarily pointing at the members of the DPW, but the member of Local Twenty-Five who represented them, not this time around, but the time before, or those that might have been there. So, I thank you for all your efforts, and, uh, I was pleased, along with Michael, to, uh, present to the board an agreement, and hopefully, uh, the board will react positively to it this evening.
Okay, I'll take a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to ratify the memorandum of agreement between the town and North Reading and DPW Local Twenty-Five for the period of July one, two thousand and seventeen through June thirty, two thousand and twenty.
Second.
Motion and a second by Mr. Minypelli. Any more discussion? None heard. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous.
Yes, Mr. Next one is to ratify, is to ratify the integrated agreement with North Reading administrative staff.
Mr. Chairman, through you, the next two items, uh, North Reading administrative staff and the library, this is effectively taking a memorandum of, of agreement that have been entered into with these two units earlier this year, signed off and implemented, and effectively updating the existing contract language, the entire contract document to include them. So there's no new benefits that are being extended, there's no change of benefits that's being extended, there's no additional time being added to the contract, it's simply an administrative action to create and establish, to establish a single unified document for these two collective bargaining agreements for both the town and for its employees. And these are both for agreements that have terms ending June thirtieth, twenty eighteen.
Mr. O'Leary.
I'm just happy to see these, uh, integrated agreements coming to fruition. Uh, we've been trying to get this accomplished for a number of years, and it's, uh, certainly makes it a little bit easier going into the next round of negotiations if we have one document that memorializes the terms and conditions of the contract, so it's, uh, it's something we've been trying to accomplish for a number of years, and we're just about there, which is great.
It's certainly a big part of the process that I don't think we've given a lot of, oversight to in the past year, so it's, it's great to see that we have it now part of the process. This will memorialize it tonight. So, take a motion?
Sure. Mr. Chairman, I move to ratify the integrated agreement between the town and North Reading and the North Reading administrative staff for the period of July one, two thousand and fifteen through June thirty, two thousand and eighteen.
Second. I have a motion and a second by Mr. O'Leary. Any more discussion? None heard. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Next is to ratify the integrated agreement with the library.
For motion, Mr. Chairman.
Um, Mr. Tom Administrator, has any discussion?
Play further.
Same, same as the last one.
Same, right? I'll take the motion.
Same discussion as the last one.
Mr. Chairman, I move to ratify the integrated agreement between the town and North Reading and the North Reading Library Staff Association Local Forty-Nine Twenty-Eight for the period of July one, two thousand and fifteen through June thirty, two thousand and eighteen.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. O'Leary, any more discussion? None heard. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Next, we are gonna vote to set the two thousand and eighteen ambulance rates. Mr. Gilberto.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Through you, um, we have a brief presentation that, uh, we're happy to go through, but to give the kind of summary for the board, the chief has been working with, um, Comstar and our finance department to make recommendations relative to our rates, and this is something that periodically, periodically occurs. Uh, I want to thank the chief for his efforts in talking with them. You have a form in there that effectively shows the recommended changes to the rate structure. And so just to give kind of a quick summary, and these will be for rates effective January first, twenty eighteen, what Comstar did was they took the average of the top fifty rates for their clients, and they identified it, and you can see for the, um, emergency and non-emergency base rates for BLS, they're recommending, uh, rate of one thousand three hundred and fifty-two dollars per call. Is that the right terminology, Chief, per call?
Yes.
Uh, our current rates are one thousand two hundred and fifty dollars per call. In the case of the ALS emergency base rate, the ALS one rate, two thousand one hundred ninety-seven dollars is what's being recommended. Right now, it's one thousand six hundred and fifty dollars, and for the ALS two emergency base rate, right now, it's three thousand, right now, it's one thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars, it would go to three thousand three hundred and twenty-three dollars. And our mileage and ALS intersect rates would remain the same at thirty-eight dollars and, uh, two hundred and seventy-five dollars. So this was based on effectively the trends in the industry and updating our rate structure to ensure that it's consistent with what we found, and, and again, it would, you're effectively looking at the average, which is what the chief has recommended and what we're recommending to the board to approve here, and there's a motion in the pack to provide that.
If you wouldn't mind coming to the podium, Chief? I'm sorry. Yeah, yeah, at the podium, please, 'cause the folks at home can't hear you.
So, uh, as Mr. Gilberto said, this was, uh, advised to us by Comstar in a meeting that we had here when we were researching some of the, uh, trends that were happening, happening with our billing. Um, they pointed out to us that we haven't had a rate increase in approximately eight years. We haven't raised our rates in eight years. Uh, they recommend an eight percent raise, an eight percent rate raise in the BLS side and a thirty-three percent rate raise on the ALS side. If all of these things add up and everything works out with our billing and our collections, we stand to increase our collections by approximately eighty thousand dollars a year. So we'd increase our collections by eighty thousand. So I just wanna make sure that everyone knew that it's been a long time since we raised the rates. Um, I understand that we have to look out for our elderly in town, but those are covered under the Medicaid, Medicare rules, um, and it's our billing company's recommendation on pushing the rates up. Thank you.
Chief, if you wouldn't mind, before you leave, I just a couple questions for you.
Okay.
So, when we charge these rates, it's only when we transport to the hotel, I mean, to hotels.
Yeah, to the hotels.
I know we do go to hotels, but that's private. Um, no, to the hospital, correct?
Correct.
So when, if we go to a scene, we don't have a transport, we come back, there's no billing?
There's no billing.
Okay. And then, the future, just your perspective, what do you think lies for the future associated with these rates? What do you see? Your perspective. Well, I've heard many different things.
I've heard everybody say that everything's gonna start to get, um, having a political agenda, and I haven't seen it yet, but that doesn't mean that it's not gonna happen. Um, the rates are going up, there's been some, um, Medicare discussions at the State House and stuff which have been defeated, which will allow us to charge what we need to charge. There was also at one point where they were gonna pay the patient who then in turn had to pay us. Um, that's been defeated for the most part, so I would like to say that nothing's gonna change, but I don't really think that I can predict the future. Um, I haven't, in my, in my seven years of being chief, I really haven't noticed a change.
Thank you.
Fair enough?
That's perfect. Any, uh, any more discussion on this? Any board members, any questions? Okay, take a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the two thousand and eighteen ambulance rates as reflected in the attached rate structure recommended by the fire chief.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. O'Leary. Any more discussion? None heard. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Unanimous.
Mr. Chair, um, Mr. Town Administrator, uh, Mr. Prisco sign this as the chair, or do I sign as the clerk?
Well, that's for the rates.
For the rates.
I think I do.
Yes, yes, the chairman.
The chairman, yes, chairman. You're all set? Before you go?
First one, we can talk about the show.
Does the chief, does the chief need to sign it?
I can sign it. I can sign it for the past.
All right, so I don't sign it?
Okay.
Michael, I don't sign this?
Sign it, I'll send it in.
Yeah. I just signed your name, Chief.
Okay.
Thank you.
Chief, Mr.
Next, yes.
Mr. Chairman, just something.
Can I just have the motion slip? Just a small piece of paper.
Yep.
Thank you. And if we could just get a copy, you need a copy of that, Mike?
Um, when I, when I send this in, I'll CCU, I'm just gonna scan.
I just think we need it for our open meeting documents.
Oh, you need it now?
Nope, no, at some point.
We, I, we can use the unsigned original.
Okay.
For the back, yeah, that's fine, that's normally what we do.
Thanks, Chief. Yes, sir.
So I just wanna provide an update to the board as well, um, so, and this was something as a follow-up to the recommendation from our auditor over the, the summertime. We collect, um, and it runs in a range of between seven and eight hundred thousand dollars per year on our ambulance receipts, is that roughly the, the number? And it's been a couple of years since we've gone through the exercise of removing what's on the books as uncollectible or as otherwise unpaid bills, and that amount, um, again, you're looking at, uh, probably, you know, over two million dollars in revenue we received over that three-year period, is a roughly seventy-seven thousand dollars worth of uncollected debt that's out there, that's owed to the town, some of which, depending upon the availability of information that we have, uh, will be writing off, and some of which will be record, reporting to third-party credit rating agencies, um, which may or may not result in payment. So I, I just note that these are not abatements, which generally come to the board because of inability to pay, these are people who have elected not to pay and are also not, have not elected to request an abatement. They may, as a result of this action, request an abatement, in which case, we'll do as we normally do, which is handle, uh, confidentially their request by bringing it to the board. That's all, thank you. I just want the board to know we fault, we did follow up on this issue brought up by the auditor.
So we should expect to see this on the agenda in the future?
You may receive abatement requests as a result of this action, and in some cases, I, I don't, you know, I, but I, I'm not, and I'm not requesting any additional, um, approval by the board at this point.
Thank you. All right, the next subject is, discuss the trash and recycle collection program.
Mr. Chairman, through you, uh, the DPW Director, Mr. Lafferty, is here, as is Mr. McGrath, the Chair of the Recycling Committee. Um, there has been, uh, I think, an ongoing informal discussion relative to our, uh, soon-to-expire trash and recycling collection contract. Um, they're here to basically provide us a, a brief update as to what they have found in their discussions with the market, and to perhaps get some initial feedback from, um, the board as they pursue options with the market. Again, this is something that is not governed under Chapter Thirty-B required by the traditional procurement process, but we have made a commitment that we're gonna go to the market relative to the competition. Um, whether that goes in the, in the form of a traditional Chapter Thirty-B bid or some other scenario, we clearly have demonstrated that commitment, uh, to, to look to the market to make sure we're getting the best offer. And then, for those who don't know, we have JRM as our contractor right now, and they correct, they, they collect trash and recycling, bring the trash to Covanta and the recycling to their facility in Peville. So with that, I know, uh, you have presented a, you've submitted a presentation, um, I can, I can pull it up electronically, it'll take me just a minute, if you have it on thumb drive.
Mr. Lafferty, might you come up to the microphone?
Maybe to the.
Right here.
Right here. Up this one right here.
Yeah, if you have it, can you load it up there, and if not, I can load it.
I can on this.
Okay. Mr. McGrath, if you wouldn't mind, come sit right here at this microphone, it'd be great.
Sorry. While, um, Mr. Lafferty is pulling the information together to, to put on the presentation this evening, just a couple of things that, uh, that might, uh, that, that, that he has conveyed to me that are going on. First, we have a contract with Covanta for the disposal of our trash at their Haverhill facility, and that contract was recently extended in September, I believe, as a result of a multi-community effort to try to negotiate, uh, stable rate structure over the next few years. So this would not be that contract, this is the contract to actually transport the trash and the recycling to their ultimate, um, ending place. There are a number of communities in the region whose contracts are expiring as of June thirtieth, twenty eighteen, when ours does, so there's quite a bit of discussion that's happening amongst, um, individual communities, there's some consortiums of communities that have jointly procured this. So there's kind of a lot happening in the market right now. We are in a situation where, um, our collection is manual, meaning that it's an individual jumping off the truck, picking up the barrel and dumping it into the truck, versus some communities have moved to, uh, an automated collection where there might be a bin with a cover that's collected by a, a truck, uh, uh, robotically rather than by, um, by a person. Um, so that, that's one of the things that's out there as an option, I'm sure the board's well aware, there's a cost associated with that, both with the outfit of the equipment and as well as the, uh, purchasing of the towders, um, but it is something that, that is out there. And so I think our, our hope here is to kind of have a, a brief discussion with the board about this and get, provide you some information, get some initial feedback, and come back and have additional discussion in January.
Okay. Turn it over to Mr. Lafferty.
Andrew Lafferty, DPW Director, uh, thank you, um, Chairman and board members. Um, like Town Administrator just mentioned, just kind of the ten-thousand-foot overview of the current trash collection, um, I've tried to keep it very brief, just to kind of give you an update or give you some, some points on it, and then, um, and then see where the board's desire may be to, to move forward. Um, the current JRM contract expires in twenty eighteen. That current contract has a total value of five hundred and seventy-five thousand, which does include our solid waste and our recycling. Um, it is a one-day, as you're mostly aware, it's, trash is collected up on one day, Tuesday, both trash and recycling, and it's done weekly. Formally, we have a two thirty-five gallon barrel limit, and it's a dual-stream recycling collection, which typically means the paper and cardboard is separated from the co-mingled, uh, recycling stuff. Um, we service approximately forty-three, uh, forty-three hundred sixty-three household units within the town. So in, in some, just, we've had some discussions with a couple vendors, um, and just other communities, and, and Ed McGrath and the Recycling Committee has helped assist in kind of seeing what's going on in the marketplace. There's a variety of options out there. Regardless of the options, costs are increasing, um, across the board. A large part of that is, is due to the fact that recyclables are not worth, that, not worth anything, so to speak, uh, as they were going back three, four, or five years ago. Currently, JRM, who is our vendor now, has built a, built the cred, the recycling credit into our current rate. Um, they've indicated also that, moving forward, that that recycling cost will most likely be built into the next rate. There are other communities that actually have a separate recycling fee that, that goes along with their contract, um, depending on how it's negotiated. Um, our current service, as you're aware, is, is a manual trash collection and a manual recycling collection. Some of the options that are available out there, um, can be a variety of things. We've looked at a couple of the, just, in general, what's being done at some of the other communities. Uh, they're do, they're doing manual recycling and manual collection on a five-day work, on a five-day collection week, and then other communities are going to automated on both the recycling and the, the trash on a five-day week, or a five-day week with every other[1757.33] or a five-day week with every other week, collection for recycling. There are also a variety of automated trash communities, but still, that still do manual recycling. So, the variety really is, is out there for us to really pick up kind of what we want to do. One of the biggest pieces that seem to be a stumbling block, at least initially, which one of the reasons why we want to present this to the board is, our restriction right now is a Tuesday collection. And if we continue to hold that Tuesday collection only as a requirement, and we go out for quotes, we're really limiting our options, because vendors are not, are not, most likely not gonna, not going to and not willing to put a quote in based on a Tuesday-only collection. Due to the cost that it costs them to provide trucks, they would, technically, they, they would bring, be bringing in four or five trucks for, for a one-day event, and then have four or five trucks sitting for the next four days. Most of them do not have a, a one-day open, and if they do have a one-day open, the only feedback we've gotten at this point will be a Friday-type collection day, which we're, we're not looking to really promote. In order to open up the variety and possibly some cost savings, we really need to look at possibly shooting for a five-day or a four-day collection week. Whatever that variety may be, it may be automated, it may still be manual, but that's really where, where a lot of the vendors are looking.
Andrew, if you could just take a second, could you just explain to the board members the automated, what that means?
So, the automated is typically, so some of the communities have already gone to them. They're typically the toters, the large toters, the, they'll provide a specially, specialized truck, run by one person, comes out, can pick up the toter and dump it automatically. They save by putting only one guy out in the road, and it's much more efficient and faster for, for them. So, so there's some savings there. Does that clarify?
Yeah, in five days, meaning some parts of town may be a Monday, some parts may be a Tuesday, and so on.
Correct. So, so most of the vendors are really interested in a five-day collection day. So, the town would be broken into five separate routes, and each day there would be a, a collection of that routes, similar to a lot of the communities in the, in the, in the area. That opens up the door for a lot more vendors to be interested, because they can, they can manipulate their current fleet to either take on the town, or they can procure more trucks to take on the town and still, still put those trucks out on the road on, on the other days. So, as far as the automated goes, the automated does, we do see a significant increase in cost, because there is a cost associated with purchasing of the toters. The initial estimate on those toters is somewhere around five-hundred-fifty thousand. That would be town-wide. There's a variety of different options that are available, whether it's purchased through the vendor or purchased separately by the town. But that's one of the things to consider. In addition to that, the, the thing that's been brought up on numerous occasions was the current lead time it takes for that to happen. And that's a four- to five-month window, which is one of the reasons why we wanted to be in front of the board today to kind of move some of that forward before our June deadline. So, we're not scrambling at the last minute trying to address that.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, Andrew, just on the, on the cost, that, is it one tote per household?
So, that would be typically two, two totes, one for recycling, one for trash.
So, it's about five hundred dollars a tote? If you could, forty-five hundred?
The five-hundred thousand would cover two totes per household. It's forty...
Yeah, we have less than five thousand households here, so we take it five hundred, five hundred dollars a tote.
That was the initial estimate. We think the numbers are a little higher than they could be, but just to kind of explain where that number is, it's a significant number that there isn't a direct correlation to reduction in trash, to say that, you know, going automated, you're gonna reduce your trash by five hundred thousand dollars.
Just a quick question on the automated. If, if you go automated, you know, if someone puts something else that's not in a barrel, how does that hit?
So, there's a couple of different options that are out there to look at. Some are pay-as-you throw, some are purchasing additional toters at a, at an additional cost, that then they can put out two toters in the, on a regular collection.
If someone throws a mattress out there, or like they do now, or a chair, or something like that, two guys just take it, throw it in the back of the truck.
So, so the bulky items will be handled separately. Depending on how, what version we pick, it could be maybe one day a week, the bulky items go out, or one day a month, the bulky items go out, and then they would, they would send out a separate truck. Most of them seem to be going that way with the, the bulky items.
Excuse me, Andrew.
Yes.
Mr. Messeri, I want to ask one, one question.
So, it may have been a week or two ago, I, I read in a news article that China's stopping the import of recyclables, which sort of says recyclable cost is gonna go up, rather than maybe getting money for it. We may be paying. Has any work or anyone done any looking into this in terms of any impact it might be on our future water rates and...
Future trash rates.
Trash rates, yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, yes, and actually, I'll, I'll let Ed answer that. Ed and I have had discussions about that, but he's clearly an expert on it, so.
So, the, about, this China sword is just, the cloud's getting closer. The storm was starting about two years ago. I work, I'm the recycling coordinator in Bedford, and we were in a similar situation. And they, they call, they call these fancy names, Sustainable Recycling Assessment, stuff like that. It's basically cost money to process, what used to be the processing was done, and they were getting the money on the other end, marketing the material. Well, the markets have got, were going down, the contamination issues, and, and in the eastern mass, there's a limited, we only have like four or five facilities that sort recycling. And so, they started charging a fee. Then, and, so in Bedford, we did, we did this contract two years ago. We have it capped in our contract with Republic, that it's forty-five thou, forty-five dollars a ton is the most we will, we will pay, we'll have to pay. So, that's what we've been going on. And then, this year, this China sword, basically, the government of China shut, we, we did not issue new licenses to import waste materials, because they felt that China was becoming the garbage dump of the world. And they have environmental concerns, and so they, they have put their contamination levels at point-five percent, and the material recycling recovery facilities, MRFs, technically can't make that threshold. They, they just, they don't have the technology. They have to add labor to go through it, because the, what people put out for recycling, et cetera. We go, I can go on, that's another, whole nother topic we could discuss, but staying on the money, in Bedford, July, August, and September of this fiscal year, we got a credit, a couple hundred bucks a month. October, we paid twenty-five dollars a ton for recycling. In, in November, we paid twenty-seven dollars a ton for, to process the recycling. It's still cheaper than going to Covanta, but it is, is a cost. I recommended to the town, when our contract was coming due two years, that they should put fifty thousand dollars in the contract, in the budget for a, for this recycling processing fee. I was being very conservative, because I know towns don't have a lot of, you know, you can't, if something sneaks up on you, it's gonna wreak havoc, so I was trying to be conservative. But we had it in the contract, so the most we'll pay is forty-five dollars a ton, you know, on a recycling. So, that, so basically, that's what the China situation is, is they've shut off the markets, and everyone's scrambling, and so the, last week, I attended a meeting representing Bedford and North Reading, and two of the MRF operators were there speaking for Cassell and Waste Management, and they said they're pursuing other markets, but these companies know they're, they're stuck. So, they're not negotiating from strength, and the price is not getting the prices they used to get, and it's just, they gotta hire more help to sort the stuff. I'm not sure, the, the MRF is a sorting facility, and, and elementary where the, the, the truck comes in, you might have seen it at JRM in Route One. They come in, they drop, empty the truck on the floor, a front-end loader takes a scoop, puts it up, it goes up on a conveyor belt. And the first stretch of the conveyor belt are workers grabbing stuff, hangers, plastic bags, cords, stuff that doesn't go, go in the, it shouldn't be there. And they, they, now they've had to add more help to there, and then it goes, the machinery, I don't understand all the science, but they wind up sorting it by material, and it takes about ten minutes to go through the line. And if they have to, they'll put the line through again, but it's all that, all that extra labor now, and they're, these two gentlemen that spoke last week are saying they're gonna have to invest in new equipment to try to meet the China standards. So, it's gonna be an increase in costs. So, I, I told Mr. Lafferty, when we, we were discussing this earlier this year, this is something you need to be cognizant of, and, like, so.
So, basically, then we've got transportation cost is going up. Recycling cost is going up, both for regular trash and recyclables.
Yeah, we, so, just in talking to, to the vendors, if things stay the same, we, we would expect to see a twenty-five to thirty percent increase, just from what we're paying today, on, without changing the service at all.
So, that would include the disposal of trash and...
Trash, trash and recycling.
Recycling.
Yep, the collection of trash and recycling.
Sorry to interject, and the other, other thing, like, we, we have Covanta. The other issue that's going on in a macroeconomic level is the outlets for materials are shrinking. So, the fact Covanta has limited capacity, the state's limited their capacity, and these MRFs have limited capacity too, that the state's allowing them to do. And basically, the spot market is disappearing, that these, these facilities can only take the company, the towns and companies that they've got a contract with. So, the company, the guys who are trying to play the market and sneak a load in here, they're getting shut out. And so, we really want to secure an outlet for this material, the Covanta being, and having the contract for Covanta is the, is the example.
Mr. Schultz.
Yeah, Mr. McGrath, that kind of ties into my question. I know a few weeks back, there was a problem with JRM trucks basically being stuck at Covanta, because Covanta was backed up, they were probably maybe biting more than they could chew and taking on too much volume. If we're looking to put this out for bid, is there an advantage on the Covanta side with going with one carrier or another, or it does not, not come into play?
Covanta's our, we're the vendor, we're the client of Covanta, so...
That's a separate contract. Was there any, so JRM, whether we go with them or the next guy, nothing to do with Covanta?
Yeah, I, I do the same thing with Bedford with Republic, but as Andrew, we, the plant manager, you know, they're trying to give priority to the municipalities that are under contract. And they're trying to work through this, they've got issues. They've had issues with drivers pulling guns, fistfights, because someone thinks they're cutting the line. There could be a North Reading load being brought in, and the guy's been waiting there for three hours, blows, blows, you know, blows a stack and starts trouble, so...
I want to make it clear to the public that the ways that we did have were not JRM-related.
Right.
I think that's important.
So, so just a couple of factors to consider, and, and we've already, probably hit on most of these already, but just I wanted to quickly reiterate. The, the current one-day collection restricts vendors being interested in quoting any, any services in North Reading. They're not as inclined or, or able to take on a Tuesday because of their current fleet's schedules or a one-day collection in general. The credits are no longer being received for recyclables. Right now, because we, our credit is technically built into our cost, we don't, we're not seeing the change like, like Bedford does. But moving forward, we're gonna see whether it's built into the, the overall cost or whether it's a separate fee. We're, we're not gonna be seeing the credits we've gotten in the past. One of the things that's been brought up is the, the town, one of the things we need to look at considering is the, the fee for disposals CRTs. Currently, there is no fee for a resident to dispose of CRTs, but the town is paying, paying that. We're one of the only towns in the whole area that do that, which means we're probably getting rid of a lot of CRTs from other communities that are making their way to North Reading, and we're, we're, we're seeing those costs. And as we had mentioned earlier, the bulk waste would most likely need to go to a separate truck collection, whether it's a one-day a week or one day a month. There would probably be a different type of collection for, for the bulk waste. Some of the differences between the automated and the manual, and, and, you know, these were some of the questions I've been asking both the vendors, other communities, speaking with Ed. And it kind of been indicated in the past, yeah, earlier, was, there's not necessarily a correlation to say, you know, if we spend X amount of dollars on going automated, including buying the toters, that we're gonna get that back on savings in, in disposal or in collection. It will possibly reduce the cost to reduction, it will possibly reduce, reduce the solid waste costs and increase the recycling, but whether we see a five-hundred-thousand-dollar increase, it would be, we had pressed to see that. I did request from some of the vendors to just see what the impacts have been in other communities that have gone from manual to automated, to see what the rate of recycle, have, has the rate of recycling increased to a significant level to make some benefits there. So, I'm still waiting on some of that data. The automated is, is much easier for residents to, to use. It's, everything goes in one toter. Obviously, the toters are very, very simple to carry out to the, or bring out to the streets as compared to the little eighteen-gallon buckets that tend to blow all over the place. You know, we tend to have less trash blown on the streets. There are potential opportunities for DEP grants going to the automated system. No guarantee on any of those grants, but there are some, some opportunities to maybe recover some of those costs. We would expect to see some reduced cost in the service due to the, the vendor being able to put one man on instead of a two-man crew for a manual collection. But that's, remains to be seen on what, what comes out of the quotes when we put that forward. So, kind of the reason we wanted to bring this to the board was to get some feedback on, you know, what the desire is, in which direction we want to, the town would like to see us go. The significant changes that we need to consider will be changing from the one-day to the five-day collection. Now, that's really the one that opens up the door for a lot more opportunities. And then, to get some feeling, whether there's a desire to go to an automated or a manual, stay manual or go to an automated-type collection, and then see what type of feeling there is towards implementing some fees for CRT collection.
Mr. Messeri.
Pending any, your questions.
So, Andrew, another thing I think needs to be taken into consideration, any changes that are gonna be made, whether it's automatic or manual, is...
Mr. Messeri, if I could ask you a favor, if you could just speak into the microphone?
Yeah, sure.
Thank you.
Whether it's gonna be manual or automatic is, the seniors that have very, very low amount of trash, basically, and currently, based on the current system, are paying the same amount as everybody else. As the rates, and they appear, the rates are gonna go up. There's gonna be a lot of feedback from that community. And as you well know, from the Messeri household, when the barrel didn't get picked up, there's one kitchen basket each, kitchen bag in the barrel each week, alright? And the rest is picked up, so now we're gonna have a bigger barrel for most people if we're going to the automatic. And is there a way to maybe come up with a system that could maybe have two tiers of people that have one barrel versus two or something to offset that cost? And I'm not talking for myself, really. You know, I, I can afford it, but there are a lot of people in town that can't.
Right. I'm not aware of any specific programs, I'm not sure if Ed has, that, that has...
I've been looking into that, I hear this similar, what goes on, you know, I see carts. We, in Bedford, we have a forty-eight-gallon cart for trash. And if residents need more, there, there's overflow bags that they pay for at the stores, or they can purchase, they can, it's not a purchase, but pay the fee for an additional trash cart, and they get billed on an annual basis. And the reci, we, we're very similar to what, what we're doing now is the same as North Reading's doing as far as recycling. It's almost an apples-to-apples comparison. But they, they get to an issue, you start doing multiple-sized carts. Now, you're gonna have carts for those carts too, you have, there's a storage issue. People move, carts disappear, you know, and stuff, and it's, it's a question that is constantly, how do you, how do you treat certain segments of the market? And seniors being one is, and they don't want a bigger cart, what I'm hearing, they want, because they don't fill them. And a lot of people, it's too big, and they physically have difficulties moving the, the carts, even at forty-eight gallon, moving it to the end of their driveway each week. It's, it's a challenge, so, I mean, it's something we could, you know, I'm looking forward from, from where I'm standing, and North Reading benefits, and when I'm doing research for Bedford, I'm kinda, you know, I share it with Andrew, this is what I got. So, I understand, sensitive to your questions, Mr. Messeri, I just don't have an answer for you tonight. for you tonight.
I wasn't necessarily looking for an answer tonight, I was just suggesting that as part of what he's currently doing, is that, that, you know, will be an issue, and that maybe it's worth looking at options there, so...
Mr. O'Leary.
Just, I've seen some of these other totes that the automated system have, they're heavy, they're big. And I also see them lingering longer roadside, because they're big and they're heavy, people tend to leave them out so, a little bit more outside in the neighborhoods too. Then again, I tend to see it more in the urban areas, more urban than suburban, but still in those communities that have them, because they're so heavy, and again, for those people who are, you know, limited in their physical capacity to haul these things around, it makes it difficult, more difficult. And again, I don't know, I haven't seen any real smaller ones, I just see these, well, 90-gallons.
So, so most of the vendors are, at least mentioning a 90-gallon recycle bin, which is similar to the ones, if you've seen them in the town hall here, or some of the other municipal buildings, they're definitely the bigger ones?
Oh, excuse me, but I was thinking of the other, regular trash, that's the 90 was the recycle, but the, the, the other ones are 60 gallons.
Sixty, correct.
Sixty gallons, which is still significant in size and weight. And again, the way that they're built so that they, robotics can handle it and whack it and empty it, it's, it's got to be pretty heavy, it is very, they are very heavy.
They weigh less than 10 pounds.
What's that?
They weigh less than 10 pounds. I don't have the exact weight off the top of my head.
Their wheels are...
Yeah, they got wheel, the wheels, you just tip them, they're not, you don't pick them up. People would not be picking them up.
Boy, some of the ones I've seen...
Well, and that's part of the reason why the automated system has, the trash companies will not be picking them up physically either, because, for that exact reason also. They want it, they would prefer to go automated with those, and if it's not automated and it stays manual, then they don't want to use 60 and 90-gallon toters, because they'll blow up their personnel, so to speak.
So, I just want, I have a couple of questions for you. So we did a survey several years ago, when we were originally allowed people to have four barrels, and then we were able to get down to two, and I know there was a lot of heartache going on, but I believe, if I have the numbers correct, 95% of the town had two barrels less, we found, but we were paying for four.
92% had two barrels or less, there was about 4% had three, and the rest was four or more, and that totaled 195 households.
So, you know, I think that data is still valuable, I can't imagine it's changed much in, over these last several years. And I think we have a reality here that we have to face, all right? How we do trash today won't be how we do trash in the near future. And I think we have to go back and look at that data, and I think, Mr. Messeri hits upon a very important point that I think needs to go back to the vendors. You know, if we can have a 90-gallon barrel for recycling, and we can have a 60-gallon barrel for trash, then why can't we have a 32-gallon for seniors as well? You know, if, that's how they're charging us, right? I mean, there's got to be a way to find a solution for seniors, not only here in our, our community, but throughout the Commonwealth. I mean, there, it doesn't make sense that the, that they get hurt.
But you, you need to, there's a correlation here, and you don't start these options that Mr. Lafferty showed you. The 96-gallon cart for recycling is for an every-other-week collection. So that's one question we need an answer, do you want to stay weekly recycling, or are you willing to go every other week? And that's one of the variables. If you go weekly recycling, you go down to a 64 or 72-gallon cart, unless, you know, you're not going to need that big cart that you see in the town buildings.
So what's the difference, though, in price? Is there a 5% reduction, 30% reduction?
I want to say, I have to look at numbers in North, in Red, in Bedford, but I think there was, the selectmen chose to stay weekly, and it cost an initial 75 grand. PINCOM over there wasn't happy, they were questioning that, but...
Mrs. Minipelli.
I just, I mean, I just think we need a little bit more information, and then I also think we shouldn't be catering to vendors. Vendors want the contract with us and should be catering to what we would like, but let's explore the options and the different pricing for the options. Me personally, just from this small discussion which we've just began, I would be absolutely opposed to making people go and buy trash bags at the store. Pick up the trash, we all pay a trash fee, pick up the trash every week, let's keep the community clean, that's my personal perspective here. I haven't heard enough to see what the cost differential is, but I think, I think Selectman Messeri makes a fantastic point, that if, if we can maybe have a separate barrel for people that only, that don't generate as much trash as a family of six. And I do think the numbers are different now, because we have a lot of families, that's expanded now, so I don't know how old that data is, that will, I do recall the timeframe when we went from four to two, and that's manageable for larger families that live in the community, and there are a lot of us.
Well, that was based on two barrels at 55 gallons?
35.
35 gallons, so if we, I think we have an opportunity to gain some savings, if we go to a one barrel, but it's a larger, but we, it would be a lot, I guess use a friendly if we could find a solution for our seniors, not go such a larger barrel.
But I, the question, I think we're, I suggested to Andrew, you don't mind me speaking, is what is your field? Do you want us to keep weekly recycling? Do you want to go every-other-week recycling?
Do we know the differential?
I don't have an answer now, but this is what, this is what, that'll play into what numbers that we can present to you.
But wouldn't a vendor, wouldn't you put those options to a vendor and say?
These haulers don't, you're thinking, these haulers don't act like that, the trash industry is not...
So what'd your survey say? Was that, was that part of the survey?
What's that?
The old survey we did.
I'll dig up the, I still have it, I'll dig it up.
I think there's a lot of great information in that survey that will help us answer some of these questions.
I can do it by neighborhoods, and you can...
What I'd like to do for the sake of time is to get you back here in front of us, and really start exploring the options. And between now and then, though, I think you need to do some homework, and sort of collect what these options are, you know, options A, B, C, and D, and, you know, try to give us a range, I know you can't give us a matter of fact, but we need to understand, if we go to a, of the other week, what does that really mean? Is it really 75,000, or is it 200,000?
Right.
Or is it, you know, 10,000? Because I'll tell you what, I'll spend the 10 grand to have it every week, but, you know, that's me.
And that's what I, I said to Mr. Lafferty, we need, I didn't, I didn't get this type of guidance in Bedford, and I spent a lot of nights in executive session over the course of three months discussing this, so, you know, we're just, let's get some information from the, what's the board's, where, you know, what your feeling is.
Mrs. Minipelli.
I have a quick question, do you know any other communities that do do an every-other-week pickup?
Yeah, that information's available, I have some information, if you can get a list to me of what, do we still, Mr. McGrath, do we still have towns that we benchmark? We used to do some, we benchmark certain communities?
We do them mostly for personnel matters, yes, they usually are a similar population.
Yeah, so if you give me a list, you give me, Andrew has my email, if you give me the list of company, the towns, I can pull, there's a DEP database I can pull that out of, and provide that information of what communities, our population are serving, the 4,500 households, this is what other towns are doing.
And would you, would you also be able to maybe demonstrate from a comparison, I mean, because that's public, the contract amounts, what the price difference would be?
I'll have to do some scrambling on that, there's not a real database where you, you got to go digging for that stuff.
How many communities, I mean, there seems to be a lot in our consortium or area now that are coming up at the same time, how many have been subjected to the market changes
Everybody.
so far? Or is it relatively new and very few communities have fallen into the...
Everybody, everybody.
Everybody now, I mean, is getting into it, but I'm just wondering, are we at the front end of it, or the middle, or the back end of it, or...
Kind of in the middle, I would say, it started two years ago.
Okay.
I mean, to give you an idea of how, what, I'm not trying to scare you, but Fall River, Casella Waste Systems told Fall River, "We don't want you recycling anymore, there's too much trash in it," turned them away, was costing them $108 a ton, and now they're shipping their recycling to Connecticut. So these companies are, you know, the publicly traded companies, Waste Management, Republic, Casella, they're, they're in to make money, they're, you know, they have fiduciary responsibilities. And so when they, they'll just shut you off if you get too much stuff.
Well, that was a point I, down here, kind of going off what Mrs. Minipelli was saying, we're the ones that are the customer, but the problem is, they have all the control now. It's starting to see a lot more monopolies out there in this industry, where we really don't have any leverage, we're almost at their mercy, so we need to really do a good job collecting the data, sifting through it, using our survey results, and we need to communicate with the public. We need to share every step of the way, what's going on, because we should not be throwing this down their throats, they need to feel and understand the pain that we're dealing with here. This isn't something we want to do, all right?
And this is something that's coming up as enforcement.
And it's across this, the whole nation. This is not just localized, this is a national issue, and, but, we have to communicate, and we have to really, you guys, it's really on you to collect this information, look at, when you get, bring us options, you really need to show us where the savings are, and we have to do it this time with seniors in mind, and we have to find, if some other vendor out there has to deal with this issue somewhere, and throughout the nation has to, we can't, can't be unique to North Reading. So whatever solution is, we need to think about that.
Just if we go to a, a five-day system, we had some issues in the past where we were concerned about the vendors coming in with half-loaded trucks from other communities, and we were getting tagged with the bill. What is that, from an administrative standpoint, going to do, I mean...
So, as of right now, we inspect all the trash trucks when they roll into town in the morning, and when they, when they have trash onboard, we, it's deducted off their, off their bill, so we're, we're already addressing that. We would obviously have to do it every day, I don't see that as a, as a significant issue.
It's not, okay, I just...
So we inspect four to five trucks on Tuesday morning, essentially. We don't, we don't do the recycling trucks, because there's no cost there for us one way or another, so...
Although there will be now, there appears to be.
Moving, moving forward, depending on however we go, we would still expect the inspection to continue.
It, it, just in relation to recycling, I mean, you drive around town, there are a lot of people who are extremely conscientious, where the recycling actually is more than the trash.
Right.
You know, so if we're talking about considering a, you know, bi-weekly, I don't know if it works.
And these...
You know, I don't know if it works.
Yeah.
For a lot of people, again, I'd, I'd almost, I'd probably at least 50/50, maybe a little more towards the recycling, just because, again, we don't, there's only two of us at home now, so don't generate a lot of trash, but a lot of recycling. So it's, you know, and then in relation to Mr. Messeri's point regarding the senior citizens or even smaller households, you know, we have a fee now of $256 a year, which some people...
56 a quarter.
56 a quarter, 56 a quarter, that's what people complain about, because they only put, you know, one trash bag out. If we get into something like this, and you're talking about $150,000 increase, 30% over half a million dollars, there, there needs to be a way to, to split that a little more fairly, so that the big, bigger users pay a little more. And again, I don't know if there's any formulas or what other communities do, and I don't want to go back to stickers, you know?
No.
But with this technology... Mr. Messeri was here for the stickers, I don't think you were here for the stickers, the sticker program, Mr. McGrath was here for the sticker program.
The advancement of these technologies and these trucks, when they lift it, they, they should be able to pull a weight on each one of them.
That's money, you want to do that, that's more money.
Is it really?
Yep.
Because I should, my family should pay more than my neighbor next door who only puts out one.
Now you've got technology, there's, there's, you can put a chip on the, on the container, and the thing goes up, and the truck reads a chip, and they, you know, you get all this data, then you've got to manage all the data. That's, that's available, there's towns, cities and towns across the country that do that, but that's another, that costs additional money, you know, so...
Forget about that idea.
Mr. Schultz, befriend of his neighbor's bucket over there.
Well, thank you. And so, how soon, Mr. Goldborough, should we readdress this?
I would suggest either January 8th or January 22nd, depending upon the progress, probably the 22nd.
And really, thank you guys, especially Mr. McGrath, in an unpaid position and volunteer...
Thank you for being the bearer of bad news.
But he's been, you know, we wouldn't have our program where it is today without the volunteerism of your party, and so, thank you.
Thank you.
Your continued support.
One quick, Mr. Chairman. Mr. McGrath, the question I get once a week from constituents, can you please tell the public how they should recycle right now?
Okay, so, I tell, we, we used to be dual-stream, sort your paper and your cardboard, and keep your bottles, cans, and, separate from everything. I tell people now, keep doing what works in your house, just get it all to the end of the curb.
Let me just clarify that, so we don't put the wrong message out. Our current contract is dual-stream recycling with JRM. JRM's made the statement that they will not pass up someone's recycling on curbside if it is commingled, quote-unquote, "single stream." So, they will still pick it up, but currently, our, our agreement is a dual-stream agreement.
I think some of their trucks are commingled.
But they don't always have their trucks, dual-stream trucks, that's what people say.
Correct, and there are times when the trucks will throw all the, the dual-stream or the single-stream into one, one hopper, and there are times when they'll separate it. They own the recycle facility, they're the ones that manage all the recycling, so that's really on their end how they want to recycle it. The concern we have is we want to make sure that they're not, they're not leaving at curbside and expecting a resident to, to do one, one week and one the next week. And so far, we've had no complaints that they pass it up because of that, we do get complaints that they pass it up because of contamination, and that's, that's the big problem right now, is plastic bags seem to be the biggest issue, and we will probably, we'll start seeing issues with that, because they're going to have to start tagging them, because they have to turn them away, if, if people continue to put plastic bags in them.
Reading's does that, Reading does that right now.
What's the definition of a plastic bag, like a white?
Any plastic bag.
Anything.
Any plastic bag.
Grocery bag, any?
Grocery bag, does not, any, any plastic bag, the wraps of Polar Spring case, case of water, those plastic wraps, anything like that, it's called film in the industry, plastic film. In Redding now, JRM, if your recycling's in a plastic bag, they tag it, leave it on your front yard, they don't take it.
Wow.
And that's one of the, that's, that's, that and trash and the recycling are the two, one and two issues with recycling, it's causing the problems. So, you know, so I tell people, to Mr. Schultz's, reci, dual-stream, separate it right now, because it's changing, I don't know what it's going to be like when, next summer, if they're, they're going to get stricter or whatever, but if you think about it, you know, they talk about Amazon, or the old, the old last mile, right to the doorstep, well, flip that around, that Amazon box that you got delivered today with a Christmas gift, you are the first mile of somebody else's supply chain. You know, that box is, somebody's raw material, yes.
Yes.
So, putting your broken-down boxes into a trash bag would be wrong.
Right. Absolutely, yep.
Putting it into the plastic trash bin would be right.
Yes.
Yikes.
No plastic bags, because what happens is, think if it's a conveyor belt, it's, it goes up this conveyor, they sort through it, they grab it again, then they got, it's like wheels and hooks and stuff that sort in the stuff, those bags get caught in the hooks, they have to shut the plant down, and the workers have to climb up the conveyor belts with knives and cut all the plastic. Anything tank, VCR tapes, trash, not recyclable, anything like that, goes to a hole.
Well, we're going to have to do some workshops, as we start to really narrow down what we're going to do, we're going to have to have multiple workshops where people come out and get educated on what we decide.
Yep, yep.
Communication is king in this, so...
Yep, yep.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And Merry Christmas to the both of you, and happy holidays.
Thank you.
Okay, let's see, next one is to review the additional community compact proposal. Go.
Yes, sir. Through you, Mr. Chairman, so in addition to the request for a, a community compact for a commuter park-and-ride location, I've had some discussions with the superintendent of schools about the potential for submitting an application for a evaluation of the management and maintenance of town and school department facilities. And the goal in this would not necessarily be to look to reduce costs or reduce personnel, but rather to identify options that might allow us to operate more efficiently, to integrate management systems in all of our buildings, to utilize existing resources within all of the town's departments, or potentially to move all of our buildings to a similar maintenance schedule. And so, I've had some discussion with the superintendent, along with the town planner as well, and we intend to, we would like authorization to ask the state to consider funding this, as something we could look at. Again, I can't stress enough, we don't go into this necessarily looking to eliminate jobs, or to make significant changes to the way we deliver the services, but we're looking to try to optimize what we do, using our resources, and identify areas where maybe we need additional resources. It's kind of built on the commitment that we have made to our town facilities, which are aging on our end, it's kind of hand-in-hand with the effort that we'll be doing for a facilities master plan for all the town buildings. plan for all the town buildings. And I think it's also a reflection of the reality of the sophistication that is in the newer school buildings named in the middle in high school. So we felt that this was an opportunity to try to evaluate an option. I believe the superintendent was going to be having some discussion with the school committee tonight, but I can't confirm that fact. But prior to submitting the authorization, we wanted to review this with the selectmen and seek your approval, and I believe we have a motion accordingly.
Any discussions, questions?
I'm a big fan of the community compacts, and we, we've met with the lieutenant governor on this subject a few times and they continue to keep issuing them, and I think we should continue to take the opportunity to take advantage of these best practices. And there seems to be a lot of grant funding out there that could benefit us as well, so I'm a big fan of the idea. So if we don't have any more questions, I'll take my motion.
Mr. Number, number eleven, Mr. Town Administrator?
Yes, sir.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, I move to authorize the filing of application number two with the Commonwealth's Community Compact Program for Commuter Park and Ride Facilities Management/Maintenance.
Motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. Mr. O'Leary, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Unanimous. Thank you. I asked the town administrator to put on the agenda this evening is just to do a quick review, a year-end review for 2017. It was a busy year. It seems to fly by faster and faster every year. And I'd like to try to do this every year around this time if we can, because I think it's helpful for us to reflect on all the work that we've done as a community, but to also help us prepare for our annual report, to help laws the town administrator to have a good summary of, just a list of the things that we have accomplished and we have ahead of us that is challenges. So we put together this quick little slide. I don't know if you have it there or not.
We have it. Fortunately, it's on this computer, not on this slide. Mr. Chairman, perhaps we could go to the next agenda item.
Sure.
Twelve relative to Comcast.
Yep.
I believe Mr. O'Leary, Mr. Maseri can provide an update.
Yeah, we can give you a quick update.
Go ahead, Mr. O'Leary.
There's a draft, yeah, there's a draft proposal that's in the hands of town council as of today, from Comcast. Over the last couple of weeks, had a flurry of activity, discussions with Comcast. We believe that we have come to an agreement, a tentative agreement at this point. Town council and their council representative is, are working out the details and the language, so we haven't seen that yet. So it's anticipated that we'll have the cable advisory committee coming before us at our next meeting, first meeting in January, to make a presentation and make a recommendation in relation to the proposal. So we made some progress over the last couple of weeks. I believe we've come to pretty close to a conclusion and we hope that the board will be supportive of the terms and conditions that have been offered. So I think it was January, what's that next meeting?
The eighth.
The eighth. So January eighth, we expect there to be an agenda item.
Mr. Maseri.
So as a follow-on to that, you know, one of the major issues is we got to the point of discussing a new contract with Comcast was that they, out of the blue and not necessarily unexpected, told us that we can't use the INET, the data transmission anymore. And those two members of the cable committee did get preliminary numbers from our, from Matt, associated with replacing the INET. And, you know, there's been a lot of work done associated with looking at what has to be done, talking to a vendor that's on the state list to get some numbers. The number's growing, by the way. And today, we had a meeting this morning over at the school with school personnel associated with information technology to make sure that we're, one is they were not really in the loop here early on, and as they discovered there was going to be an issue, obviously it impacts them in both data and also in broadcasting from the various schools, et cetera. So I thought it was an effective meeting today in terms of getting it all out, this potential for some state grants for the school side of it, which may help overall, because this is, the INET is used by both organizations and it is something that we're all going to share. And only fair that if the school can raise some grants associated with it to help fund the entire program. We also did discuss, Matt did kind of cover what the cost would be to eliminate the, the INET altogether and use VPN tunnels. And, you know, overtime, it's much more costly. So it seems that we're on the path of the INET. They're going to work, the technology group is going to work closely together to work out the details, and we planned another meeting.
February second or?
I don't remember the date.
Sixth, two days after the Super Bowl.
Yes, that's right.
Yes.
So there'll be another management-level meeting.
Parade day?
Parade day.
Parade day.
To review that, and hopefully at that point, any adjustments to the capital plan will be available sometime in that timeframe.
So the money that's generated from Verizon and Comcast, those funds that comes into NorCam can't be used for this kind of expense?
No. No. In fact, the money that Comcast in the agreement, I won't even say what the number is yet until we're ready to sign off on the agreement, is not coming from the fees that are applied to the citizens of NorCam.
It's not coming from the subscribers, it's going to come directly from home base, Comcast themselves.
Okay.
So on, on a bright side, the consultant, Ken?
Kevin?
Kevin.
Kevin.
From Redding, right, who has helped us with Munis and still consults with us, has gone through it already in the town of Redding. So he was at the meeting today, too. So we're getting at least some input from, you know, a technical individual that's gone through it for another community.
They built their own just recently, so.
That's great. Well, thank you for the time and effort you guys have put into this, and I know you've talked about the last two weeks, but it's been a lot longer than this.
It's been longer than that.
And by the way, we're just going to pick up and sit with Verizon.
We're going to sit with Verizon shortly, so.
So get a good rest over the holiday break, okay? All right, anything else? Now we got the presentation up, and what I would like the board to do is if we go through it, there's probably things we missed, and this is the opportunity, we'd love to get your input. Again, this is just something Michael and I put together, just more to get the discussion going, but if there's things that we missed, we want to capture it tonight so we can have this as a good outline for our annual report.
Mr. Chairman, we could also place it in the Dropbox folder for the meeting tonight if members wanted to review it and comment back at a later time.
Yep.
In the interest of time. So.
Oh, I see that the font is fantastic this evening.
You can't read.
Maybe you could just read it.
Yeah, I'll do my best to read it. I do apologize. I'm up there because I can read a little better.
Yeah, don't ask me, I came and see it from here.
So just going through quickly, starting with the month of January, two new department heads joined us. Our HR director, Mr. Collins, is here this evening, and a little bit later in the year, the IT director, Matt Cooper. February, the town considered and then declined a medical marijuana dispensary proposal. We know that's something that's come up, but there was quite a bit of time that went into that, and some feedback from the community as well on a couple of occasions. In March, we had a special town meeting, rezoned 102 and 104 Lowell Road, and voted at town meeting to prohibit recreational marijuana sales in North Reading. In that same month, the board signed a purchase and sale agreement with Polte Homes. April, the board executed a new contract with the town administrator. Board elected to change healthcare providers from Harbor to Blue Cross Blue Shield, and also implemented a new creative approach for controlling healthcare by signing a contract for a participating funding arrangement, which is the partially self-funded health insurance model that we are in, that is in effect this year. In May, Mr. Schultz elected to the board. Town voted to prohibit recreational marijuana at the ballot. The town signed on with the Merrimack Valley Regional Transit Authority for the Ring and Ride program. In June, town approved funding at town meeting to build a permanent bathroom and concession stand at Arthur Kenny Field. In August, the town applied for a $3 million water infrastructure grant from the state Mass Works Grant Program. September, concluded negotiations with Andover for an IMA extension to allow us more time to consider the MWRA or Andover for water and wastewater options. The board also updated its strategic plan with a priority focus on town facilities and resources. October, we had a town meeting, approved funding to further evaluate the Andover MWRA options, and approved the social host bylaw, which is awaiting formal approval from the Attorney General's office. November, Chief Warnock announced his retirement effective January 21st next year. December, town completes the cash sale of 104 Lowell Road for $30 million to Polte Homes, town net proceeds in excess of $20 million. And the town has concluded its negotiations with Comcast for a local franchise agreement to offer cable television services. This evening, we didn't want to be presumptive, we also settled two collective bargaining agreements, as the board indicated. And we didn't know that there were two others that were settled earlier this year, the library and the North Reading administrative staff. So I want to thank the chairman who put virtually all the time and effort into putting this together. I just kind of put it on this thing and moved her order around a little bit. We welcome your feedback now or after the fact as well as we go forward. We generally have the reports finalized, I believe, in February, maybe March, early March, when we give it to Karen in my office, who gives it to the publisher. So.
But at the end of the...
A lot going on and a lot accomplished, for sure.
At the end of the evening during the board comments, I was going to bring this up, but I'm going to take the opportunity now, and as you, you can see, we went through it in a few minutes, but I know there was a lot of your personal time in the evenings and all these committees, and I don't think the town folks, not by, not on purpose, can recognize the amount of time that we spend outside of this room and going to our liaison meeting responsibilities and our committees that we're part of, and the subcommittees and ad hoc committees that we're part of. And this is the results. There's a lot up there that we've accomplished and a lot of work behind it, hours and hours. And the town administrator, your staff, needs to be committed because all those things, everything that we do behind the scenes, you guys bring, you know, get ball over the goal line and then you get it executed flawlessly with your team. So a lot of thanks has to go to them.
Absolutely.
Much, big kudos to them. So your input's welcome, we can go through it now, or you want to later on, like the town administrator said, you know, send us an email, we'd like to try to capture it as we start to outline the annual report, and the town will start to see those come out. When do those come out sometime?
They get published late spring.
Late spring.
Early, late spring.
But we have to do the work now, so I just wanted to make sure. We didn't miss anything, so I'll open up to the board.
Karen will keep after you, Michael.
Well, I think this is a good way to at least get an outline done. It's a busy year. It's a busy year. And we have an equally busy year ahead of us, so. But getting the collective bargaining agreements done, I, I didn't put them up there on purpose because I wasn't sure how things were going to go this evening, but getting that completed, but also starting to prepare our strategy for the next time. We talked a lot about that in executive session, so I won't get into it in detail, but we need to prepare for the next round. Sustainability is the key. Anything else you want to add, or would you like to take the opportunity later on?
If you look at it, though, I mean, there are an awful lot of, there's, there's an awful lot of work and time and effort that gets put in just on a regular basis dealing with what is normally our responsibilities. But if you look at some of these issues, these are issues that, you know, kind of get thrust in front of us, or opportunities that present themselves, which take an inordinate amount of time and human resources from our staff to take advantage of. And one thing that's noticeable is, is that there have been more opportunities for grant monies and a lot of time and energy put in. Again, there's still a lot of stuff in the works. I mean, this is, these are things that have been finalized, but if you were to add the things that are in the, in the works right now, the list would double.
Oh, yeah.
You know, so it's, so this is a nice recap in relation to maybe accomplishments or things that have been finalized, but truly what's, some of the things that are going on and that we know are coming, even the discussion we just had about the trash, we know that it's, it's an issue globally here, but it comes right down to local level, the time that's going to have to be spent.
Yep.
To deal with that issue and come to some conclusion as to how are we going to address it. It's going to take a lot of time and effort and...
But there's a lot of volunteerism behind this.
Oh, absolutely.
Right? That I do think we miss every once in a while, even these committees, the CPC members who are elected officials, but we also have a ZBA that are appointed, and we have Hillview Commissioners, and on and on and on. I mean, a lot of these people out there that aren't here this evening, that, you know, we could spend all night trying to recognize them by name, really their efforts are behind a lot of these bullets, so I just don't want that to get lost in the noise. The other thing that I, when I finished doing this, I sat back and looked at it, I said, you know, I've been here almost eight years now, and when I see the way we operate today versus what we did eight years ago, it may, it was no fault to anyone, but I think we're more proactive, planning ahead and actively working things where, when I first got around here, we seemed to be very reactive management. And we're not, no longer just, I mean, we have to every day, if something comes up, we have to react to it, but I think you see less and less of that. You see good planning, long-term planning, like the trash. We're bringing it up early, we're going to vet it, we're going to communicate. I think we communicate way better than we ever have. And so testimony to the town administrator, because it really falls under your leadership, the whole communication piece, you have brought us to all of the level, and it's important, and we see positive effect from it. Anything else? So, yeah, we'll make sure the board gets this, but thank you. Arthur Kenny Field, Restrooms and Concessions, I assume Mr. O'Leary want to...
The town administrator, they're just looking for a little more money because they're progressing again.
That's correct. It's a simply payment of requisitions under the existing contract. The agenda did have an area for potential action on change orders. We do not have a change order to report to the board at this point in time. This is purely payments in accordance with the existing contract.
Okay, so we're not going to do the change order?
Correct. There is no change order.
There is no change.
Just two, two requisitions to be paid.
Great.
And there are two motions, I believe, or one, maybe one motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve payment requisition number two in the amount of $55,530.35 to Construction Dynamics, Inc.
Second. I have a motion and a second by Mr. O'Leary in discussion. The progress looks like it's pretty much on schedule, looking good. On schedule, we haven't heard otherwise. Nice clean operation down there.
Yep.
Great. So no, no, any, no discussion, no questions?
When do, when do you think it'll be? When, when do you think it'll be?
Has to be done by March 15th. Has to be done by St. Patrick's Day, according to the contract, but do they anticipate?
It'll probably be around that time. I've been not expecting a delay at this point.
The weather, I would hope.
Fully built, done, everything?
The building's going to be built elsewhere, it's going to come in, drop it in.
Fully placed?
First thing, they just tie it up.
Final completion, I believe, or maybe substantial completion, but it'll be, it should be usable.
Great.
Great. Hopefully we don't have eight feet of snow in the ground. Okay, any other things else? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve payment requisition number three in the amount of $91,200 even to Construction Dynamics, Inc.
Second. Motion, a second. Any more discussion? None heard. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye. Unanimous.
That's the last one, right?
Yep, we're on the 15th.
Okay, now on to the fun stuff, the license. Do you want to take a moment?
Just a brief update, yes. So we have a bit of a different strategy that we're employed after talking with town council relative to the renewals. In past years, the board has taken action to renew a license that has been incomplete for a short term, perhaps it renewed it until, for 30 days, or until the first meeting in January.
Talking with town council, we believe that a more effective strategy for the few licenses that remain unresolved are that the board vote to renew them, subject to whatever specific remaining requirements being fulfilled, and instruct us to hold the license until those requirements are fulfilled. And what that will do is, it will do two things. First, it will put the onus on the license holder to take the action needed to be taken before December 31st, to comply with any renewal requirements. And second, secondly, it will avoid any need for any board, any further board action relative to a license, either between now and the end of the year, or even after the end of the year. This is a bit of a different strategy. I think we've done a tremendous job, and I have to commend Jane and Karen for their efforts to get us to this point here, where we're, I think we're down to three, three issues that are out there that we expect will be resolved, but are not resolved right now. And that was through a dedicated effort on their part. They worked closely with Amy Tijara and the Board of Health Office as well, to give a coordinated renewal package to our, our licensees. And I think we've made a lot of progress. It's not perfect, but we've made a lot of progress, but we believe this strategy will effectively compel people to comply, and if they don't, they won't have a license in hand as of January 1st.
Everybody understand that?
I just, I know you put it in our pack, but what are the outstanding issues?
Sure, so there is a particular motion that references that. Bear with me one moment. While, while the town administrator is looking for that, I just want to make sure the public listening at home is, you know, this process starts way back in September, right?
Early October.
Early October. And here we are at the end of December, and we still don't have this completed, so it's not like we haven't given ample opportunity, having been here and available to help them get through the process. So, if anybody's affected by this negatively, it's upon themselves, they brought it upon themselves, so.
So, there are three. One is a Loyal Order of Moose, that we're, again, recommending the board renew here, and instruct the town administrator to notify the licensee that they do not submit the required paperwork by December 29th, which is the Friday before New Year's. License will not be released, and they'll be ordered to cease business operation. In this particular instance, there's a civil fingerprinting requirement, these, no.
Inspection certificate.
Sorry, excuse me, I keep confusing it, too. So there's a, a, a building department inspection certificate they need to have in accordance with the state statute relative to safety and egress in the building, which I believe that they're going to be able to obtain, but they have not obtained right now. In the second case, Christopher's Market, they have gone through a transfer, which the board approved, which, the issue is not with the transfer, but it's with the regarding the fact that they do not have a license to sell food at the establishment. So they're, they've been issued a license as a convenience store, but right now, they don't have a license to sell food after January 1st.
Is it a common vixor, is that?
No, no, it's a convenience store.
Okay.
Yeah, so they have a beer and wine license for a convenience store, not a package store, and without their food license, they're functionally similar to a package store. So, again, I think we expect that that's going to be addressed by virtue of their actions with the Board of Health. And then the third item is Speedway, where we have a need for tip certification and civil fingerprinting for the manager. And that there, again, they are a wine and malt beverage off-site consumption license for a convenience store. So those are the three items. These are all resolvable items for these licensees. We have very clear direction, and they'll have about, about 10 days to resolve things still between now and when the 29th comes up. I think that that's more than fair.
And when did everyone else have to have their paperwork in?
So for a, for a license under the, an ABCC-related license, which all three of these are, they're due in the month of November. And sometimes we get them complete in the month of November, sometimes we get them almost complete, and we get additional information, but you saw there was a good chunk of them that were in place, that were acted upon by the board in the first meeting in December.
And I just have one more question. So, we modified the policy of just automatically renewing right when we didn't get a response already, and we said we weren't going to do that. We weren't going to be doing that unless we got the response back, and then they would have to come back and reapply if they didn't comply with what they were supposed to. That was my recollection of what we did last year, and to address the issue of lack of response.
So, I don't recall a modification in any policy. We did have some discussion relative to it last year. We had some conversation with town council about this, and the feedback that we received from town council was that, is a requirement that the application be submitted, and that, presuming the requirement for the minimum, that the minimum state requirement has been met, the ABCC would likely, even after a hearing, would consider that the license was submitted for renewal. But even if they didn't, if we were to attempt not to renew it, until it got to a hearing down the road, the license would, in all likelihood, we would be required to issue it during the appeal period. And so we felt that we could get into all of that, which is certainly worthwhile, but a much more effective thing is to say to them, we have your license, and you're not getting it until you give us everything. That seems, that leverages it into a real issue as of January 1st, where they cannot function, they cannot open. Any disciplinary action the board wants to take after the fact, certainly within our rights to do, but we kind of felt that where we seem to often end up is in an extension period into January, where the license is renewed, but it's, it's only renewed for a short term. Here, we're telling them, it'll be renewed, but you can't operate without it on your, physically on your premises, you won't be able to receive it until you've complied. And again, I fully expect these individuals will comply, based on the timeline that they have to do so, which is, again, almost two full business weeks, but, including the holiday, maybe one and a half business weeks.
All right. Any more discussion? Yes.
It is disappointing, because you guys do a lot of work trying to put all this together every year around the same time, and it's not like these license renewals are surprises to these business owners. I'm as pro-business as it comes, but these people need to cooperate with the town, with you guys, and I think the message needs to be sent that we have deadlines, we can't hold the train for two, three people when you have how many licenses total. And Ms. Brooks, I can see you nodding, you're heading an agreement over there, I mean, it's got to be, you don't pull your hair out. Yeah, it's frustrating for the folks at work here, just wanted to point that out.
Thank you.
One of my biggest pet peeves, so. Okay, I'll take the first.
Motion.
All right, Mr. Chairman, I move to renew the following common vixor licenses to expire December 31, 2018, subject to all regulatory department requirements. We have Beyond Bagels, Dos Lobos, Dunkin' Donuts, which is Holly Donuts, Dunkin' Donuts, which is Norrid Maine, Group One Entertainment, DBA Hillview Country Club, Heavenly Donuts, Joe Fish, Mario's Restaurante, McDonald's, Ryer Store, Sports Spirits and Steaks, Teresa's Prime/Girl 19, The Lobster Claw, Vailla Sa Inc., DBA Subway, and Wendy's.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? So, the Subway, this one here, or C, I'm sorry, Speedway, did we, was Speedway on that?
That's coming up, a few motions on the road.
That wasn't on there.
No, no, those three were.
Just wanted to make sure it wasn't on there. Okay, good. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Unanimous. Next one? Oh, no, take your time. Just signature's pretty easy.
Mr. Chairman, I move to renew the following common vixor, all alcohol licenses to expire on December 31, 2018, subject to all regulatory department approvals, or requirements, excuse me, that's Dos Lobos, Joe Fish, Group One Entertainment, DBA Hillview Country Club, Teresa's Prime/Girl 19, and Sports Spirits and Steaks.
Second.
Second by Mr. O'Leary. Any discussion? None heard. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Mr. Chairman, I move to renew the following package store, all alcohol licenses to expire December 31, 2018, subject to all regulatory department requirements, that's one-stop liquors and liquor and beverage.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? None heard. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, I move to renew the following package store/wine and malt beverage licenses to expire December 31, 2018, subject to all regulatory department requirements. There's Ryer Store and Route 28 Lucky Mart.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any more discussion? None heard. All, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, I move to renew the following Sunday entertainment licenses to expire December 31, 2018, subject to all regulatory department requirements, that's Sports Spirits and Steaks, Group One Entertainment, DBA Hillview Country Club, and Teresa's Prime/Girl 19.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? None heard. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Mr. Chairman, I move to renew the following Class 1 license to expire January 1, 2019, subject to all regulatory department requirements, and it'll be Bobcat of Boston, Inc.
A motion and a second? I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Minypelli.
Mr. Chairman, I will be abstaining on the Class 1 and Class 2 licenses, as I have a family member that holds a Class 2 license, and all Class 1 licenses automatically have a Class 2 license, so I will be abstaining from any discussion and any vote on those matters.
Okay. Anybody else?
And this was, this was how it came up in terms of the policy, I remember, because there were two establishments that we learned from Selectman O'Leary, they were extenuating circumstances on the last time, so we granted them extra time, so that, that may be where I was thinking, we talked about a difference in our policy.
Yeah.
Maybe not related to the other licensed establishments.
But we did provide some attitude, I think it was last year, maybe two years ago.
Yeah.
There were unusual circumstances.
Correct. There have been no unusual, no credible unusual circumstances reported to us.
Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
And one abstention?
Yes.
Okay. 401.
Class 2 licenses. Mr. Chairman, I move to renew the following Class 2 license to expire January 1, 2019, subject to all regulatory department requirements, that JMM Enterprises, DBA A1 Auto Sales, and P&amp;T Auto Sales.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Minypelli. Any more discussion? None heard. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? An abstention? One abstention.
Mr. Chairman, I move to renew the following automatic amusement device license to expire December 31, 2018, subject to all regulatory department requirements, Cowabunga's Entertainment, LLC.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussions? None heard. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? Unanimous.
These are the outstanding issues. Mr. Chairman, I move to renew the following licenses to expire December 31, 2018, subject to all regulatory department requirements. Loyal Order of the Moose, Club, All Alcoholic, Fraternal, Automatic Amusement Device, Jukebox, Christopher's Market, Package Store/Wine and Malt, Speedway, Package Store/Wine and Malt. As we discussed earlier, further instruct the town administrator to notify said licensees that they do not submit all prior required paperwork by December 29, 2017, their license will not be released, and they will be ordered to cease and desist on all business operations.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? None heard. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous.
We're up to appointments now.
That's it? That's the last one, you say?
Yep, we're up to the appointments now.
Mr. Schultz will take the appointment.
Mr. Chairman, we have, the first up is the Board of Appeals, but on this one, Mr. Belavance, who's here in the audience with us tonight, is on here, but he's also on the CPC, so I believe we wanted to table this one until we can get an opinion from town council, whether there'd be any type of conflict there.
I mean, wouldn't CPC just be a liaison?
Yeah, I mean, I am a liaison to the zoning board. Folks talking on the board the other day, they had a vacancy.
I, I, I'm sorry, Mr. Belavance, I'd have to ask you, come up.
No, I am the liaison from the CPC to the zoning board. They did have a vacancy, and we were just chatting at the last meeting, so.
It's an associate vacancy, is that what it is?
Yeah.
We'll have to get back to that one.
Table that one?
Yes. Okay.
Unless you're not recommending the incumbent, I think we could act on the incumbent.
Well, there are two openings.
He's right, Mr. O'Leary's right, we could do.
If you're not recommending the incumbent, they'll let us know now, if you are.
We could do everyone else.
I would recommend the incumbent.
Then why don't we do that appointment, and then we can act on the other one?
The vacancy.
The vacancy. Hold the vacancy.
Hold the vacancy.
All right, Mr. Chairman, I move to place a nomination in the following name, Jennifer Platt, the incumbent for reappointment as an associate member of the Board of Appeals, for term to expire on December 31, 2020. In addition, there's one other opening that we're going to hold in abeyance, pending further review of our board. All right, I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion, Mrs. Minypelli.
How many other people put their names in to be considered for that?
There's seven additional names outside of Ms. Platt.
And I don't see Mr. Belavance, since yet.
There were six on there, and plus you mean seven, right?
And that's for two openings, right? But Mr. Belavance is looking for an associate, vacancy, right? These would be two voting, voting members?
The motion is written as an associate.
This is an associate member.
These are both associate positions.
For reappointment as an associate, okay.
So, there's a comment, I've recommended you reappoint it, and there's another position that we're going to hold in abeyance, for tonight anyway, so.
So right now, the motion is to reappoint Ms. Platt, and Mr. O'Leary, I believe, second.
Okay. So I have a motion, I have a second. Any more discussion?
So, Mrs. Platt has been serving for a number of years in the associate positions, position, and has filled in a number of occasions, and done a great job. She's been a terrific member.
Okay. And do we need a roll call vote on this? I think we do, right? So, Mr. O'Leary.
Ms. Platt.
Mr. Missery.
Ms. Platt.
Mr. Schultz.
Ms. Platt.
Mrs. Minypelli.
Ms. Platt.
And the chair votes Mrs. Platt. Thank you, Mrs. Platt, for your continued service.
Next, Forest Committee. Mr. Chairman, I move to place a nomination in the following name for reappointment to the Forest Committee for a term to expire on December 31, 2020. There's one opening. The incumbent is Stephen Nathan.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. I've spoken to Mr. Nathan several times, and I'm glad that he finally got his, his paperwork in, but he's been wanting to re-up his time on the Forest Committee, and he's been a great asset, and we're happy that he's going to continue for another term. Any other comments? If not, I'll, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Unanimous.
Regarding process-serving constables, Mr. Chairman, I move to place a nomination in the following names for reappointment as process-serving constables, for terms to expire on December 31, 2018. There are five openings, there are five incumbents, who are John Fiorello, Paul Dorsey, Douglas Lab, David Rosati, and Paulo De Rosers.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
You know, are they actively utilizing the ability to serve?
A few of them are, I can recognize the names from my practice, yeah.
I had the same question.
Not all of them?
Not all.
But I believe the limit is five, right?
That's correct, that's the board's policy.
I know the board's policy. We were at four for a long time, we added a fifth two years ago, if I remember correctly. I'm just thinking, you know, at some point in this particular position over the years, sometimes there's interest, sometimes there isn't, some people like to have it, never use it, someone else comes in looking for it, we don't have one. So maybe if we could, you know, going forward, whoever's a liaison, just find out if people are actively using it or not, rather than just holding the ticket.
Is there a way to spread the wealth a little bit, so everybody gets some?
But some of them don't use, over the years, some of them don't even provide any services. They don't do it anymore, you know?
I thought it was because we didn't task them.
Well, usually it's local attorneys that just, you get somebody, your company always uses the same person all the time.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, we should probably do that. Okay. Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed? Unanimous.
Next.
Mr. Chairman, I move to place a nomination of the following name for reappointment as detailed consul for a term to expire on December 31, 2018. And that's Mr. Jerry Berg.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? None heard. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed? Unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, I move to place a nomination of the following name for reappointment as member of the Taxation Aid Committee for a term to expire on December 31, 2020. There's one opening, and Ms. Mary Curney, the incumbent.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any more discussion?
I would recommend.
I wish she could get me a break on my taxes.
Sure she could be bribed. Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed? Unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, I move to place a nomination of the following names for reappointment, appointment as members of the Library Trustees for terms to expire on December 31, 2020. There are two openings, there's Marcy Bailey, the incumbent, Geraldine Vassil, and Michelle Muller.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it, and then I want to make a comment.
I have a motion and a second. Mr. Messeri.
Due to my schedule and the fact that a second individual applied for one of the two open positions, or three open positions, I should say, I have not caught up with that person, and I haven't caught up with the chairman of the library. So at this point, I recommend that we vote Marcy Bailey, reappoint her, and that we hold off the other two until our next meeting when I have an opportunity to do my job.
I didn't see this one in our meeting packet, that's.
What?
I didn't see it in our meeting packet. This is particular.
It was added. It was added. It was added. Second list of.
Oh, okay. Thank you. So you want to go ahead and modify the motion to just vote from one individual at this time?
To vote to appoint Mrs. Minipelli, to reappoint, and to hold off on the other two, there's only one more opening, and till I have an opportunity to catch up with the second candidate.
And the chair.
And the chair.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I'd like to restate the motion.
Please.
Mr. Chairman, I move to place a nomination, Ms. Marcy Bailey, for reappointment as member of the Library Trustees for a term to expire on December 31, 2020. And to hold in abeyance the appointment of the second opening.
Second.
And a motion and a second.
I will get that done before our next meeting.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Messeri. I have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed? Unanimous.
I would like to stay on the record, Ms. Bailey is a tireless advocate for all things library. Okay. Mr. Chairman, I move to place a nomination of the following name for reappointment as an associate member of the Library Trustees for a term to expire on December 31, 2020. There's one opening, and the incumbent is Thomas Kelly.
Motion is, do I have a second? Second by Mr. Messeri. Any discussion?
Yes. Mr. Thomas Kelly was on the board, and due to circumstances, including he might end up leaving the community, he wished to stay on as an associate member. I recommend that we appoint him as such.
Mr. O'Leary, did you?
Nope. No, sir. Thank you.
Any other discussion?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed? Unanimous.
On the Cultural Council, Mr. Chairman, I move to place a nomination of the following names for reappointment to the Cultural Council for terms to expire on December 31, 2020. There are seven openings, we have four incumbents, Margaret Bradbury, C. Jean Clark, Philip Peely, and Barbara O'Neill Smith.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? None? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed? Unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, I move to place a nomination of the following name for reappointment to the Youth Services Committee for a term to expire on December 31, 2020. There's one opening, and it's Ms. Amy Chichara.
Second.
I have a motion and a second by Mrs. Minipelli. Any discussion? No, none heard. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed? Unanimous.
That's it?
Okay.
Thank you. Is everything signed? If we miss something, Jane, let us know.
Yep.
I think we got it.
Of course you will.
Town administrators, oh, before we go on though, again, Jane, I want to thank you again for your outstanding efforts in getting all these licenses pulled together. It's a lot of paperwork, a lot of moving parts, and without you, we wouldn't get it done. So thank you for the effort.
You're welcome.
Fantastic. Town administrator report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a note for the record that I submitted a revised report, which was placed in the package this afternoon. It's in the Dropbox folder entitled TA Report 1218, 2017 Revised. The report included a notice that I received from National Grid regarding their yearly operational plan. That's more commonly known as their, their overgrowth and weed control plan, where they go through and they treat within their right of way in order to eliminate, reduce the prevalence of overgrowth in that right of way to maintain access to the infrastructure that provides the electricity, or the transmission lines that are in that right of way. I just would offer a friendly reminder that trash recycling collection will be delayed during the Christmas and New Year's holiday weeks. Collection will occur on Wednesday, December 27th, and Wednesday, January 3rd. The town's Christmas tree collection will occur on Saturday, January 13th. Trees must be curbside by 6:30 a.m. There's been some discussion informally, and I think some discussion on social media, but just to kind of formalize things, I'm pleased to announce that the town received $384,000 in State Department of Transportation grant funds to construct a sidewalk on Havel Street from Foley Drive to North Street. This location's been on the town's prioritize sidewalk needs listing, and the completion of the project will fill in a gap in sidewalk along Havel Street. Funding for the project from the state was made possible by the town's adoption of a complete streets policy, which the board participated in roughly 18 months ago. The town also received $16,000 for radar speed, for a radar speed reader and three feedback speed signs. And a butters meeting will be held on Thursday, January 4th, 2018, in Room 14 here at Town Hall at 6:00 p.m. A copy of the invitation mailed to residents was attached to the report, and we encourage residents to attend. I wish to thank Town Planner Danielle McKnight and Town Engineer Mike Sorigan for their efforts preparing the town's complete streets policy, and for their efforts submitting the town's funding application. And again, I encourage the residents or any interested member of the public to attend the meeting on January 4th. Mr. Chairman, that concludes my comments this evening.
Great.
That'll take it from almost the whole length of the table, straight.
All the way to north, and then?
No, that's it, and then it goes up to the hospital, up by your house?
Yeah, stops at.
Yeah, Peter Road, so goes, almost from the end of the line all the way down, past the school. Fantastic.
A lot of runners run that route, and it'd be nice to, not the Dodge cars.
We have an aggressive timeline for construction, to construct during next construction season, 2018. We have a bid package that we've developed, we won't be putting it out to bid until after this meeting, so we can try to take the feedback. I think as everyone can imagine, there may be issues on the road where there is, private property may be on the right of way, and we'll try to work through those issues with the involved folks, but obviously will be a significant benefit to the community.
Sure. So that meeting is 4th and Room 14?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. O'Leary, you want to start us off?
All I want to do is wish the community and my board members, colleagues here, Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, healthy. I hope you get healthy, a healthy and prosperous New Year coming up, and if you're traveling, you know, safe travels. But enjoy the, enjoy the holidays, enjoy your family, and I hope Santa Claus is good to you. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Messeri.
I have to ditto Steve, because it's probably the exact words I would have used.